Fourth, um, thank you for coming tonight's bra- school committee meeting is being broadcasted on local media and local media outlets are here. If you have or wish to have a copy of this, please reach out to me or Kevin, the superintendent of the school committee. I'm more than happy to give you a copy. Alright, let's get going on this. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'm sure everyone has a chance to review the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Megan. All in favor? Announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody have announcements, anything? Kevin?
I've got, I've got three. Um, the Milford Public Schools in partnership with the Sandy Hook Promise took part in Start With Hello Week, um, September twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. And Start With Hello teaches students in grades two to twelve the skills they need to reach out to and include those who may be dealing with chronic social isolation and to create a culture of inclusion and connectedness within their school or youth organization. Start With Hello Week raises awareness and educates students about the growing epidemic of social isolation in our schools and communities. It empowers young people to create a culture of inclusion and connectedness within their school or youth organization. And we had a number of programs and events happening throughout the week from pre-K all the way through the high school. And I think it got pretty positive reception across the district. Secondly, um, we had an opportunity to visit LaSalle College in Newton yesterday. And we're discussing several potential partnerships and opportunities that will benefit our Milford's, um, high school students. These opportunities range from dual enrollment courses to mentoring opportunities to career exploration. We're really excited about working with the team there. Am I leaving anything out, Craig? Okay. But I think it's a good potential opportunity. We're gonna be starting a program in the spring. They're looking to, um, recruit school, um, students who are interested in education and teaching. And the last piece is, um, and I'm really excited about this one, is the Milford Public Schools will be hosting A Story of a Building with the MSBA on October twenty-ninth. And what this program does is it's gonna highlight the new Woodland Elementary School. And district, um, administrators, school committee members, architecture students, and, um, members from different state organizations will all come to learn about how kind of a building process works. So a number of our administrators, folks who are on the, uh, Milford School Building Committee will all be presenting throughout the day as well as members from MSBA and different state organizations. And it's kind of everything you wanted to know about school building construction, but were afraid to ask. So I encourage the committee, if they're available and interested in attending, even for a short portion, to come and join us for the day. And that's on October twenty-ninth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What time?
Uh, runs from, I believe, eight to four.
Alright, thank you. Anyways.
Chairman, just one, just to put in a plug for the Stacy Middle School Color Run, which is next Saturday, uh, starting between eight and nine AM. Uh, I had an opportunity to participate in the Special Olympics one a few weeks ago, and that was fantastic, and I'm sure this one will be as well. So, it's run by the Hospitality Program at Milford High School.
This is like their fourth color run, I think?
Third or fourth, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, my son's doing that this year, too. Tried to coax me into it, I said.
It's a great event.
Anybody else?
Laura? Um, I'll just mention that the Monster Mash for Brookside Elementary School is coming up on Friday, October twelfth, from six-thirty, eight-thirty at Cafeteria High School. And that's a free event for any family at Brookside, or any family. Um, and then I just wanna give an update on the outdoor classroom at Brookside as well. I had an opportunity to see Mr. Elmore and see it in use. And the students are able to use that, um, outside at recess, and it provides some shade for the students during that time, so.
Alright, moving right along. Invitation to speak. Full house, no one wants to say anything, huh? Alright. Next on the item, um, agenda is the Burton Azzi Outstanding Teacher of the Year nominees and recipients. Do you care to come up front, sir?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our foundation, uh, deals with three areas in particular: education, culture, and civic. Under the cultural, we participate with the Sons of Italy Lodge in Milford to send a student, qualified student, to Italy to study every summer. Uh, under the civic, uh, we give a thousand dollar award to the town clerk and Board of Registrazers. Uh, in that town, among the nineteen towns that I represented both in the House and in the Senate, uh, that has had the largest percentage of registered voters in the community who actually turned out to vote in the local elections, the two local elections, the primary that just ended, and the upcoming, uh, November election. When that is complete, uh, we'll then, uh, tally the numbers and present the award. We give the thousand dollars, uh, to the board, uh, to the town clerk and the board. We give a plaque to the Board of Selectmen, and we give a huge banner, um, to the townspeople in the town who actually earned, uh, the award by, uh, turning out to vote. Um, that's, they're free to do whatever they want with that banner. In Northbridge, they put it on their fence right in front of the town hall and left it there for a very long time. Under education, for the past, uh, twenty-one years, we've been giving this award uh, to an outstanding teacher in the middle, in the Milford system. This is not a best teacher award. We consider all of these people to be truly outstanding. And if we ever had any doubt, all we have to do is to talk to the selection committee that makes the choice at the end of the meeting. They're, they're filled with praise for the, for the quality of teachers in the Milford system. The way it works is that anyone in the community, this is a community-wide award. Anyone in the community may nominate, uh, a teacher for the award. The teacher who wins the nomination, uh, which is presented by the school council uh, in each instance, uh, is the nominee from that particular building. So, in other words, each of these people has won their nomination, uh, for their area. Uh, then, the members of my board select, uh, seven people from the community at large uh, who are presented, uh, with the material on the background of each of the teachers. They have two weeks to look it over. We then meet in the superintendent's office one night in June. Uh, the only thing we require of them is that, in every instance, uh, each member of the selection committee uh, must comment, they go around the table, uh, on each individual who is nominated. So each nominee gets a total look, uh, by the members of the committee. Uh, once that's done, they're on their own. We don't have anything whatsoever to do with the actual selection. The selection committee doesn't. And as I said, that's the point at which they end up telling us that they really are, in some cases, surprised, pleasantly surprised, uh, at the quality of the teachers who have been presented, uh, for, for the award. Now, consider, it has been given for twenty-one years. Each year, there have been seven nominees, except for the last two or three that you had, uh, one less school. Uh, and so there are, now there are six nominees. Those who win the award may not compete again. Those who win the nomination may compete, and in some instances they do, some instances they don't. But what it means is that there are a lot of outstanding teachers in the Milford system for this to have been going on now for twenty-one years. Um, also, the interesting thing, I think, for all of you, is that it is a community-wide, uh, effort. Uh, and in addition to members of the community doing the nominating, it means that for twenty-one years, seven people, times that twenty-one, over a hundred and forty, uh, have participated in a good look at the Milford school system, particularly in terms of its teachers. So I think it does, uh, some good for the community as well as, uh, for the teachers and the students. The, the, the surprise at, at some of the efforts that teachers make on a regular basis uh, really overcome some of the members of the selection committee. They can't believe that there is so much going on, and there is. And of course, that means that in a town like Milford where we're rather a blue collar community, it was probably my generation that first began to go on to, uh, go on to school outside of Milford. Uh, and, um, it means therefore that the community prizes education. And the fact that the community is willing to pay to make certain that their children get a top-notch education is really something that I think the community can take great pride in. The fact that we do have a top-grade education is something that you as school committee members can take great pride in. So, this year's nominees. From shining star, Jennifer Malkady. From Brookside, uh, did you say it? Uh, from Brookside, can't get away that easily. Jennifer Carrier. From Memorial, Christina Co- Cody. From Woodland, Anne Anderson. From Stacy Middle, Daniel Cody. And this year's winner of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Outstanding Teacher Award from Milford High School, Jeremy Folster.
Do you care to say a few things?
We're looking for about thirty to forty-five minutes of content.
Alright, so, let me tell you what I wanna do in the school, I'm just kidding. Um, no, just thank you guys. Thank you, Senator Burton Azzi. It's a great honor, but, um, it's literally, um, I, I'm honored to, to have received this award, but it's just an honor to be mentioned just alongside of everybody that's up here and all the other fantastic teachers, um, in the district, so, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You can see that, uh, they're a little shy in their presentations, but not in the classroom. That's the extent of it. I hope to see you again next year. As long as we still have money, we'll still be giving the award. Uh, by the way, he didn't bring the check for a thousand dollars in that we gave.
Thank you, all.
Thank you. Senator Burton Azzi, before you go, first off, I just wanted to thank you for such a longstanding commitment. I think it speaks a lot, uh, to your commitment to the community, so thank you for offering this. Um, I had a chance to participate in the school councils at both Memorial Elementary and Woodland Elementary, and I can assure you, selecting the nominees is an extremely challenging process when you see how many outstanding things are happening. So I think kudos to all of you, um, for earning the nomination. Teachers are probably some of the most selfless people I've ever met, and so I commend you for everything you give every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Meghan. And for somebody who's almost a relative, thank you, Meghan.
I just wanna echo, uh, Megan's remarks, too. Thank you very much for everything that you do year after year. This is an extremely, uh, special occurrence and event, and I also wanna thank all of the teachers for the remarkable jobs that they do every day. I know that it's, it's extremely selfish, and you're looking around thinking that we're all in the same boat together. And, but you should be recognized for the amazing work that you do. I just wanna say this really quickly to, uh, Mr. Folster. Last year, I attended one of the senior night events, and, um, and so you were recognized at the end of the event. But what was most compelling to me was the five students that stood up and couldn't say enough amazing things about you. So, education aside, it's, I was blown away by the impact that you're making, um, on a one-to-one basis. I just wanna say thank you for that, because that's very rare.
Can I ask, is anyone else an MHS grad? I would also just like to point that out. I think we have incredible students who are now giving back to our community, so thank you.
Yeah.
If, if I could just jump in for one quick second. Thank you again, Senator Burton Azzi. It's always a pleasure to, to see you, and, um, when you, when you come in for the award is one of the highlights of the year. I've had the opportunity to see each of these guys work in the classroom and, um, with students. And every single one of you, like, when I walk into your classroom, you've got the type of, like, learning environments that, like, I don't wanna leave. And it just speaks volumes. Like, it, it makes me very proud to call myself your colleague because of the great work you do on a daily basis, so thank you for that as well. I appreciate it.
And same thing, Senator. Thank you for, for doing this. Twenty, twenty-one years is pretty extraordinary. And to all your teachers, congratulations, and Jeremy, class of ninety-six, baby. Well done, brother, well done.
And I'd like to thank, uh, the superintendent, because, uh, when we do have that meeting with the selection committee in his office, uh, he is not just a bystander, but he is a source. In addition to the information that's provided by each of the candidates, uh, if they have any other questions, and they usually do, uh, the superintendent is there to answer them. And of course, he has been very, very helpful to us in this whole process, so, thank you.
It's been, it's been a great partnership, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for coming in.
Alright, next on the agenda, Milford High School vending machine allocation. Josh?
That's a tough act to follow, Josh.
That's a tough act to follow with vending machine, guys.
At least I'm from the class of ninety-six.
Right, exactly. Class of ninety-six.
I didn't know we were gonna be, you know, spouting out grad years tonight, so.
This is our reunion right here.
I guess so.
Good evening, everyone. Um, uh, I'm coming tonight just to seek your, uh, authorization to spend our, uh, our vending revenues uh, in a way that I think is gonna bring a lot of benefit to our students. Um, I think you should have received a copy of, um, of the proposal in your packets. Uh, is there anyone who doesn't have a copy this evening? Um, just in the, in the interest of your time, rather than, you know, reading through it for you, I'd be happy to, um, answer any questions, uh, that you might have about the proposal, um, before you take a vote on it.
I don't have, I, I, I don't have any questions regarding this proposal, but you did this last year as well. Last year was the first year, right? How did that go with everything that you've got money-wise, and where did all, all go? Where did you travel to?
Sure, yeah, so, um, in, so, in terms of how do we spend the money?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think particularly, m-, uh, Mr. Callie, if I understand correctly, you're interested in the college visits that we did, is that correct? Yeah, so I did request last year money to support a number of college visits. Rather than give you wrong information, I'm not confident that I remember all the different schools that we visited.
If you have a few.
Yeah, I know that we took three different trips here. I believe we took, um, I wa- I believe we went to Assumption College in Worcester. Um, I believe that we went to Northeastern University in Boston. Uh, and there's a third trip, I'm not confident that I, I recall where, um, we went to. We're hoping this year to significantly increase that, uh, the number of trips, uh, that we're running to college campuses. And one of the things that I'd like to do this year, in addition to bringing students, uh, to campuses for, uh, for tours and information sessions, is also to bring our students, um, to college campuses to complete Accuplacer testing. Uh, Accuplacer testing is, uh, a test that all students who go to Massachusetts Public Colleges and Universities take, um, at the time of enrollment. And that determines whether or not they're going to place into credit-bearing classes or non-credit-bearing classes called developmental classes. I think it's really important that our students, as many students as possible, are taking the Accuplacer test in their junior year of high school so that they're getting feedback as to whether or not they're, uh, on track to take the kinda classes that they wanna take in college. So if they find out that they're not, they have time to do something about it. Uh, it's too often that students don't find out until, you know, the weeks before classes start in college, uh, that actually they're not eligible. So that's part, uh, we wanna not only increase the number of students that are going on college trips this year, we wanna increase the number of colleges that we're visiting, but we also wanna get a lot of, uh, students out to local community and state colleges where they can go and sit for the Accuplacer as part of their day on campus.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to take that test early. Um, how, how much is it? Is it like, for, do you know how much?
So the colleges typically don't charge us, um, when the students take the test. Um, we need to get, we need to bring them onto the campus so they can work at the testing center. Uh, you know, most of the colleges, uh, don't have the staff to send out to the school to conduct testing here. But most of them are very accommodating. If we can bring the students to the campus, they can test them at their center.
Do they have to take it again when they get to school as a freshman, or no?
Um, I don't, uh, so I think there are some restrictions on how long your scores are good for, so I think it depends on whether they're taking it, um, you know, in the spring of their senior year versus winter of their junior year.
Okay.
You know, from my perspective, if we can save them, um, the trouble of taking it a second time, that's great. But most importantly is I want our students and their families to get a sense of whether or not they are, um, meeting the mark.
Right, absolutely. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, this looks great to me, Josh. I'm supportive of all this. I just especially wanted to call it the civic education. I think that's an area that any enhancement that we can offer our students, uh, is beneficial lifelong, so I think it's great. And I think you went to PC last year, so, I'm not sure.
We did go to PC, yes.
Great choice, great choice.
Actually, Josh, one quick question. The career readiness trips, does that also involve the, uh, like, the microgroup trip?
Uh, so, so, uh, career readiness is actually a li- little bit different, so the, um, the upcoming microgroup trip for the Manufacturing Day, um, I don't think we'll be tapping into vending funds to cover transportation for that. This is, so, we, last year, we took at least one trip over to the Automotive Tech Center that Mass Bay Community College runs in Ashland, um, which is, uh, sort of, that's a certificate program for, for students. And, uh, I'm hoping that this year we can bring students to a number of community colleges to look not just at their associate's programs, but also at their, uh, post-secondary certificate programs as well.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, it's great. I don't, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, if that's it, can I get a motion to accept this change? Motion by Megan, seconded by Jim. All in favor? Awesome. Alright, thank you, Josh.
Alright, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda is Milford Public Schools' policy readings. Who wants to take charge in the hall?
I can do those, I guess, briefly, Joe. Um, so the first one is related to nondiscrimination and civil rights safety information. And really, the updates that we're making to that policy are strictly requirements in terms of adding two classes, um, gender identity and homelessness, um, to the protected classes. So it's just a requirement so that we're compliant with that. So, those are the minor changes that you can see highlighted in that one.
And that one, actually, we could vote on, I believe, tonight.
Perfect.
That was gonna be one of my questions, if it was.
Okay, yep.
So, let's, let's do that. Can I get a motion to approve the nondiscrimination policy update? Motion by Jim, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Okay, Megan? The meal change policy?
So the meal change is actually a new policy, um, that was put forth by the Director of Food Services, Mrs. Carla Tuttle. Um, just sort of highlighting our program, um, certainly to help us be compliant, um, with federal reporting requirements as well as to provide oversight and accountability in regards to student balances. So it just highlights kind of how we handle those processes, refunds, balances, et cetera. Um, so that's outlined for the committee, and that would be a new policy for us to improve.
Okay. And that being a first reading, there is no vote on that tonight, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you, Megan.
Sure.
Moving along, report of the superintendent.
Alright, so very quickly, I just wanna give the, um, committee, 'cause we had a few questions about the, um, the Google Calendar's use as an agenda. Um, and then open it up for questions if, um, committee members have them. Uh, Dr. Joseph, Mr. Weber, and Ms. Boyle completed two days of student training and support at Stacy Middle School this past Tuesday and Wednesday. They were able to work with every student and share tips and details on how to maximize the use of the Google Calendar tool. We also had students practice creating events and assignments. Students liked the idea of alerts and adding links to support with homework. Students even brainstormed some ideas to be more efficient, like setting homework for after-school with an alert, giving study alerts, um, and even setting up project dates ahead of time. We communicated using Google Calendar was a digital planner and to keep using and practicing to find the right mix of preferences and text to support homework completion and reminders. Additionally, um, Ms. Angelini sent, um, a communication to teachers explaining the process as well as to parents. This is gonna be an ongoing kinda process throughout the year. We've also got some video content that we're putting up on the website, and I think went, that went home to parents as well. And I think, you know, if there's a need for parents to get, you know, more of the, more of a wraparound in terms of, like, how to access the Google Calendar, we can definitely provide either, you know, Google Calendar Night Again for parents, or provide some more video content so people can just click on it on the website. And then we'll probably end up doing both things as we see what the need is out there.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a question. Kevin and, um, it seems like when Dr. Joseph first presented this, it was gonna be sort of more formulaic in terms of what we were prescribing them to do. Are we moving away from that, just to?
We, you know, we got feedback from the teachers.
Okay.
And the teachers wanted the responsibility, which I think is, is actually a good call,
Yep.
to stay with the students.
Okay.
So, like, when they're, when they move on to high school and college, they still have those kind of executive functioning skills.
Sure.
And they're able to kind of put stuff into a calendar. Where we've made some accommodations, we have some students who, um, you know, students who leave the Chromebook at school but have access at home are able to just use the Google, access the Google Calendar at night. Um, some students who don't have access, we're, we're also providing them with a paper, um, agenda to, to, to kind of accommodate that. If there's, you know, um, connectivity issues or there's something, you know, like a specific, like a student-specific need that requires them to use, like a paper and pencil, kind of a, an agenda as an option.
Okay, thanks. And is there anyone at this point in time who does not have a Chromebook?
I think it's down to just a few kids, and I'm not exactly sure the reasons, but it's just a handful at, at the middle school.
Across the district.
No, at the middle school. Uh, high school has a few more kids that are still waiting on Chromebooks.
Okay.
But I think it's, um, it might be down to five kids at Stacy. It's a very small number.
Any questions? Go ahead, Chris.
Do you know, you, you may not know this, so, answer to this, um, so, but does Google Classroom and Google Calendar, do those, can those work together? And it might, again, it might be a question.
They, 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 they definitely can. I, you know what, I couldn't, I couldn't give you a demonstration. I'm very familiar with Google Calendar.
Right. Same.
I'm less familiar with Google Classroom in terms of using it on a day-to-day basis. But I know there's, um, the reason we like the Google Suite is 'cause it all integrates.
Correct.
So I think there's, there's some opportunities for teachers to push some things out to the whole class that could pop into a Google Calendar.
Yes.
Um, but I couldn't say, like, how that would work on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, wasn't sure, yeah, 'cause I know, um, one, one, one cluster in particular is using Google Classroom so the parents can log on to that Google Classroom site and see what the homework are for their, homework is for their, for the children,
Yeah.
you know, in that class, students in that class. So it's, again, so it's a great way to be able to check
Yep.
that site based off of the Google Calendars again, so that's why I wasn't sure how they could integrate.
Yeah, so the student can see all the assignments on their calendar
Right.
um, from the Google Classroom. So, you can check off, like, I belong to this class, so I can see, you can either see it all, or you can check off classes.
Yeah, yeah, definitely sounds like we're going in the right direction as far as from the executive functioning. We've got, yeah, there's a couple different tools, and, and just trying to see what, how everything interacts, and, you know, I'm still learning myself as a parent.
Yeah, it's. But as a parent. But as a guardian,
Yep.
if you're not a guardian in all the classes, you can only see the assignments, but if classes you're a guardian to, that makes sense.
Yep.
Yes.
Based on, based on the Google Classroom structure?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, you have to be approved by the, by the teacher.
Right.
Right, you have to be, to view that Google Classroom.
Yep.
Unless, unless, unless you're looking at your child's calendar, of course.
Yep. So it's kinda one more step into a brave new world, and I think there's gonna be some starts and stops with all the technology.
Right, yeah.
Um, and we had kind of anticipated that. But I think the great thing we're hearing is teachers are very excited to kinda use it in the classrooms. The students are enjoying, you know, making, you know, that, being a part of the education. And, you know, these kinda tools are gonna get more and more, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Integrated
Yeah.
into, like, you know, the practice. And I think, this year, again, I think there's gonna be some clunkiness. And I think, you know, some, some students will struggle with it, some students will take to it. But, you know, the support is there, so if we need to do a parent training in the evening, we need to put more video content up on the website. And I think they've got a couple videos now that, I think, we're email to parents, but we can also, um, you know, highlight the accessibility of these things on that, too.
And then the, the other great thing about the classroom is at the end of the week, you'll get an email with a rundown of all the different things that happened during the week.
Exactly.
So you can talk to your child about whatever it is that you worked on in class.
Yeah, is the plan also to sa- do that same type of training for high school students as they're starting to?
So the high school is a little more wide open in terms of how just it operates. Um, and I think that there, I, I think a lot of the students are just using, like, a calendar or, um, the middle school's the first time, like, we kinda jump into that.
Right.
So there's more support there. I think the high school, we're expecting more independence.
Okay.
And when students need support, we provide that support.
I just wondered, yeah, I mean, the Chromebooks are new to certain tool.
Yep, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders.
Right, they're new to students, so, are they, do they know those tools exist, and do they know how to utilize those tools? Some will, some won't. I just forget if we have this.
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna be, uh, yeah, I think it's gonna evolve a little differently there, too, because the teachers are also kind of a year behind on the Google Classroom piece. So, I, I would say that I think the high school across the board is probably gonna, again, I think they're expecting more independence there. But if there's a need for training, we can do the same kinda deployment we did at, at Stacy.
Right.
I haven't heard that cry like I did at the middle school. I haven't heard that cry like I did at the middle school
Okay.
um at the high school level at this point. But if we do, we've got a team we can deploy pretty quickly and probably get most of the students done within a few days.
Yeah. Sure. One more question, Joe.
Yeah, go.
Now, I kind of want a tangent of it. As we are u- utilizing more digital technology, do we teach typing to the students? And is there a, a specific age that we're, that we would look at?
Yeah, so um we offer, I think there's a lot of free tools that we recommend to parents, which I just don't have on my fingertips right now, no pun intended.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, but I'm here all night, folks. But, but what I would say is that, um, what we're seeing with kids is the typing is developing over time because of using the tools.
Okay.
One of the things with um younger students with smaller hands is it's very challenging to kind of initially kind of use the home row kind of scenario.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah.
But there's, um, it's at the tip of my tongue, I can't think of the name of it, but there's a number of online resources that if um a parent is concerned about like their kid's typing speed and they feel like it's getting in the way of them completing assignments, they can call either their teacher or their principal, and they can connect them with some resources. We can probably even put um a resource page out on the website at some sites we recommend. They're kind of typing games, and and some of the teachers use them as a fast finisher kind of a, a thing too, and sometimes during the um intervention blocks.
Hmm.
If, you know, I get a struggle, they might say, hey, work on, you know, type to learn or whatever the program is called.
Wills, better? That's up.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Next, report of the super, assistant superintendent.
Thank you, sir.
Go for it, brother.
Um, first, in your packets today, you have sets of uh two, you have a da, you have a data set. Uh, this, the data set has the Milford numbers that we reviewed last, uh, I don't, I don't know that it's in your electric, I think I did it just a paper copy. Um, the m, the Milford district level uh statistics that we went over last week, I provided that for you. And then underneath the Milford set is the Woodland set that we're gonna review tonight. Um, also, I gave you the glossary of terms, so I noticed and we've been talking about all these terms and they can get mixed, so hopefully that if you get stuck on a term, you can look, just look right there in the, the glossary, so. All right, um, so this is the, the front page that you would look at for the accountability report for Woodland. Uh, up on here, you do have, like you said, you have the copy in front of you. Um, and the first thing that, that you see is that Woodland met all, met their targets this year, which is great. So seventy-nine percent uh is meeting targets. Um, if you, if we kind of scroll down and look at some of the numbers, we can see why that happened. Um, and again, if you remember from last week, zero was if they, if the numbers declined from one year to the next. One was they stayed the same. Two was they improved but didn't reach the benchmark. Three was they met the target, and four was exceeding targets. Um, so in the overall, this is the aggregate now, the, this column right here, right, this is all students. Um, you can see that, that it was, it turned out to be, this is the weighted score down the bottom, six point six out of nine point six, which is sixty-nine percent. Over on this side, this is the lowest performing, um, twenty-five percent. Uh, and I think we should be really proud of this number, that we, they earned, Woodland earned eighty-eight percent of the targets for the lowest twenty-five percent, um, which is very, very good. Does anyone have questions on that before we drill down into kind of the detailed data?
We're just saying, Craig, that really seems to align with the work that Tim's doing in regards to the chronic absenteeism when you see that, um, where do the challenges still lie?
Yep. Uh, but, but we'll go over, when we go over to the detailed data, um, I think we'll see kind of where that is, okay? But I, I think it kind of makes sense that, um, when you talk about the lowest performing, that number is down a little bit, right? They, they weren't able to meet the target. So it seems to make sense that you don't show up to school,
Right.
your achievement's down.
But overall, it's still almost ninety percent, I mean, it's, and.
Yep. Really good. Um, all right, so let's go into this. So these are the scores, th, um, this, the meeting, meeting target number that we're looking at is five hundred. So if your child got a five hundred, they would be at the meeting, the target number, okay? Now, the reason why we have met target here is because in two thousand seventeen, the average aggregate score was four ninety-seven. This year, it was up to four ninety, four ninety-eight-nine, but the target that the state came up with that we had to meet was four ninety-eight point seven. So they met the target, even though it wasn't at five hundred, the, the average, they still met the target, um, for closing the achievement gap. So they got three points for that. All right. Um, one area, I mean, you look at subgroups, sub, this one subgroup was the one subgroup that, was, was the one area that we declined. Um, three points, we're talking twenty-seven kids too, so that could be one outlier. That brings the whole um average down. Um, all right, so math achievement. Again, we're down in a couple areas, not by much, um, but I think overall, um, I think we did, we did fairly well for math. Uh, typically, with our math scores, you know, they've, they've been either declined or, or not making much improvement, and in this case, met some, made some uh improvement and met the target overall. Science, again, showed a little bit of an increase, didn't quite meet the target. Um, we're able to get two points there.
Can I just share my d, my one diatribe that I say every single year is, um, the two tests I like the least for MCAS are the fifth and eighth grade math tests.
Mm-hmm.
Because they take three years of content, basically, and three years of standards enrollment and the one. So some, sometimes you'll see grade variation in performance with, with science tests at the fifth and eighth grade. It'll be a little less consistent.
And those are still legacy tests, legacy MCAS tests as opposed to the others.
Cool. Cool.
Um, so the next, the next section is the growth scores. Um, fifty percent is, is the target for everybody on a growth score. So if you're above the fifty percent, you're um meeting or exceeding target. If you're below, you're below the target. Uh, and you can see, you can see in, in ELA, in the aggregate, uh, where meeting targets, um, in the math were just below the target. And I think, you know, one area of concern, um, is this, I, to me, this is the biggest area of concern, that students with disabilities at uh thirty-six point eight for growth.
And just as, just as like a rule of thumb, forty to fifty-nine is considered like a year's growth or was previously. It's moved from a, a median metric to a mean metric, so I don't know if that's shifted at all. But I'm, I'm assuming that it's pretty similar. So if it's below forty, we're making less than a year's growth with a particular group.
Right. And that, we'd have to, we'd have to look deeper into that to really figure out why thirty-six point eight. Um, I think, I think overall, when we see all the, all of our, all of our scores on progress towards attaining English language proficiency, um, we're doing a really, really good job across the district in that area, and you can see here, um, they're up ten percent um from last year, so exceeding target. And Meg, as you pointed out, um, Tim and the staff at Woodland really focused on chronic absenteeism. And, you know, as Tim said, I was surprised when it was on, when it was on MCAS this year, and I really, that really wasn't why, what his intentions were.
Yeah.
His intentions were, you know, it's really important that kids come to school, and if you come to school, we can help you. If you can't come to school, we can't help you. So work with us, do the best you can, and we'll work with you, and we just need your child at school. So I think he, he sent that message home, and I, and it proves out, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the rate improved by three point eight percent, which is outstanding. Um, so. Any questions about that? And I think if you look at all of the different subgroups, um, there was improvement all the way across the board.
And uh Josh Allen, the princ, Milford High School principal, also put together some great um correlations between attendance and uh student performance
Yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
that he shared with, I think, parents during orientation.
Yeah.
That, so it's, it's true at elementary, it's true at the high school.
But if we go back to that one subgroup, students with disabilities, right? That's the one area that didn't make as much of a gain in attendance than the other ones. So I think, I think attendance really plays a huge part of that, and I think, um, I think what, what Tim and, and the rest of the staff did at Woodland is kind of a model for, for the rest of the schools. Um, you know, if we go back to that first slide, if you, aside from what kids would gain in achievement, if you just look at the points that you, you would get for chronic absenteeism, right? You get four points for that just by exceeding, exceeding your targets.
So just by showing up.
So, just by showing up.
Absolutely.
So if we can get kids in the door, um, schools will perform better, not only on chronic absenteeism, but I, I, I truly believe in English language arts and math achievement scores as well.
Craig, are there any indicators why the students with disabilities widen, it didn't change compared to the others?
Um, I don't think we would see that honestly through these results. That would come more from like a follow-up that Tim might have with the teachers, or some of the context information that Tim would have as to, you know, um, looking at each individual score, why this kid might have performed the way that they did, or why that kid performed the way they did. Um, but I think, I think attendance has a lot to do with it. I think, um, I don't know, teaching expectations could be part of it, but I don't know. I'd have to.
But even as far as the chronic absenteeism itself, that, that was a one, you know, obviously the one subgroup that
Yep.
didn't have a, a, you know, a, a high change, high rate of change.
Yep. Yeah.
And in these numbers too, to put it in perspective, were significantly better than the middle school or the high school.
Mm-hmm.
So when you see the middle school and the high school numbers, there's a lot of um improving below target, and there's, you know, there's more declines because I think Woodland puts such an emphasis on it, you're seeing, you know, you're seeing across the board scores. I think, you know, one of the things we do from an analysis perspective is, you know, we always look at like, you know, the different strands and standards for, um, you know, for both math, English, and science. But I think what Craig was kind of referring to is like, I think you really have to kind of drill down to the actual students and where you're seeing, you know, you know, is it a particular group of kids? Do, do we have a number of kids that have health issues and that was driving it?
Mm-hmm.
That are connected maybe to their special needs. There could be a lot of different like narratives or answers to that particular one.
And, and I, I, again, let's keep in mind, we're talking about third, fourth, fifth grade students, they're on a computer. Um, the teacher really can't give them a lot of support. There's only certain accommodations that can be given.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're, they, you know, at the end of the day, we're talking about little kids taking this stuff.
Right, but we have the ability to drill down to that student level and be able to
Yeah, and. E- exactly.
under, under, fundamentally understand what the indicator is and then try to improve upon.
Yep. So, so kind of what happens now is, uh, once, as of last Thursday, really, uh, teachers get all of their student information from last year, they kind of look at them and say, oh yeah, that makes sense, I know why this kid scored the way that they did because of whatever.
Right.
And then they try to feed that information to the next teacher that has, whoever the student is, so that we can make adjustments.
Right.
I don't know if anybody has any questions, yeah?
Did you find, Craig, that overall it's consistent across the grades at Woodland? Were there any abnormalities, things that stuck out?
Um, I, no, I, I think, I think generally the way that you see it, um, this is how the grades performed. Uh, if you look at this last page, the last couple pages on the packet that I gave you, I don't wanna, I don't wanna try to fool around with what, what uh reported is on this. There's a lot of reports that I can grab out of this.
Oh, thanks.
But I don't wanna try to figure it out right now. If you look at that, I, I thought that they were by grade level.
Yep, they are.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, thanks.
So if you look at the first one, I'm sorry, I didn't number the pages, but the first one has the language arts, um, grade three.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see that how many students were exceeding expectations, how many were meeting, how many were partially, and how many were not exceeding. And then how that compares. The district, obviously, it's the only grade, it's the only grade in the district, only school in the district. So then, if you look to the other one, you can compare it kind of to the state.
So one thing I wanna caution, reading too much into any of this, um, is that it's really two years of data we're looking at.
Yeah.
And this is just the, you really almost need like, you really need five years ideally to get a sense of a trend. Because if, did you say that already?
I didn't say it this week, last week we talked about it.
Oh, okay. All right, but I, but I just think, you, you, you know, when you see like an improvement or a decrease, you gotta remember it's two different groups of students too.
Yeah.
And that's why I like the, the grade analysis works best when you have multiple years of data. So two years of data can be tough to really draw
Mm-hmm.
really significant conclusions from, from, from that.
And, and it's difficult to grab five years of data with this data because
It's.
you, you have this, these two years, which basically we're on the computer, we're taking the same kind of a test, so it's very similar. The two years before that were PAR. The year before that was, um, the legacy MCAS, so it's all very different to be kind of looking at.
Was, was PAR both math assessment and English assessment also?
Yeah. Yep.
So do those, do those scores in any way tie into to this?
Uh, not to this one. Last year, they tied growth scores to that. Um.
The scoring system similar?
Yeah, if you remember how the growth scores was, so if you scored, say, a seven twenty, I, I think that was the system on PAR. So say you scored a seven twenty, they took all the kids that scored a seven twenty and saw how they scored in the MCAS. And if you scored like, say, a five hundred, you were, might have had a, I don't know, sixty-five on the growth. If you scored a four hundred or whatever it is, four twenty, you scored a zero or one percent on growth, and then they put all the kids in the middle. So it's complicated.
Exactly.
Say the least.
I'll, I'll save it.
Craig, I'm on the last page, I guess, right? Just picking out science as an example, but it doesn't really matter. When it says that we had twenty-seven percent of the school was proficient in science, the state, or let's do math, twenty-four percent is advanced in math. The state percentage is eighteen. Is that the state average? So we're higher?
Yes.
Am I reading that correctly? We're higher than the state average in terms of percentage?
Um.
Sorry, if you don't know that's.
Yes, I see what you mean now. Uh, yes.
So that's the comparison you're making, okay.
Yes.
And then as sort of our leader?
So, so like, for example, um, forty-eight percent scored proficient or better according to the state, on the state side.
Yeah.
On our side, it was fifty-one percent were um proficient or better, because you add those two columns, right?
Got it. Okay, yep, thanks. As our sort of curriculum leader, does anything in here surprise you or when you?
No.
Okay.
Um, honestly, uh, we know, we know that, um, we need to take a hard look at, at the way that, at our math instructional practices, um, and what's happening across grade levels. 'Cause I see, when you look at the data drilled down to specific classrooms, certain classrooms, um, for whatever reason, kids are scoring better than other kids. Um, and I, I think, I think principals recognize that, and I think a lot of times, it could be as simple as bringing the math people together and having a conversa, and I'm saying math, but
Mm-hmm.
could be anything, any, pre, pick a subject. Bringing those people together, sitting in a room and, and just asking each other what's working. But unfortunately, because of the lack of professional time we have, um, it's very difficult to make that happen.
Hmm.
Um, so I'd like to see more of that. I'd like to see more of, of teachers kind of sharing best instructional practices that they have, sharing what's working, and looking at each other's data and seeing, jeez, your kids did very well on whatever standard it is. My kids didn't do so well, so what did you do differently that, that maybe I could grab from you and maybe I can help my kids do better?
Hmm.
So, well, that's something that we're working on, is, is how do we, how do we get teachers to be able to do that with a full teaching load? So.
Fair, thanks.
Yep.
There's also a vulnerability aspect to that too, because you're putting your, you're putting your results out there with everybody, all your colleagues.
Yeah.
Certainly, absolutely. Yep. Yep.
And that takes some time to kind of build that trust.
And, and I think, I think we've been over this so many times, I think everybody in the room can appreciate, um, uh, it's, I, I, I just remember as a principal, the, the dread that you feel when the scores come out because you'd never know how people in the public are gonna view them, and how people in the public are gonna view them and in what context they're gonna put them in so I think that we if we keep in mind that this is one day uh it's it's one measure it's certainly valuable but it can't be taken by itself as um as trying to determine whether a school is a good school or not uh so I think I think if people just strictly look at MCAS scores uh they're really selling all schools short you really have to dive dive into a lot of different aspects to figure out whether or not your your the school is a good school and and I'm fully confident saying we have excellent schools in Milford and MCAS data yeah it's important um but it certainly doesn't tell the whole story of what's happening so
Mm.
Do we use also like the the grade the GMA to try to kind of assess
Yeah so
how the how the learning process and
We're actually moving in a different direction and I think in two weeks um Tim's gonna be here talking about iReady which is a program that we're using to um progress monitor students um so we there are different progress monitoring tools
Mm-hmm.
Right.
iReady is one that we're gonna talk about um in a couple weeks I think uh maybe three.
Right. Yep. Now is that information that can be presented to school committee just to sh- again to
Yeah.
you know you're talking towards this one one test and in the one day the one test
Yep. Yep.
and you know if if a if a student's having a bad day it could potentially produce a lower score whereas the other tools that are there
Yep. Exactly.
do they have results that can be presented and we can show the classroom development and show student development?
Hopefully I don't I I haven't seen the um the product but but the way that progress monitoring tools work is there's certain benchmarks that we're hoping that students reach at certain different at different types so
Mm-hmm.
we give the benchmark assessment if a student you you with this product you get the feedback right away with a GMA and the grade kids are filling in the bubble tests then we have to have somebody sit and run them through a Scantron machine which took forever and then you get the results back and you know you're three weeks late by the time all that happens but the iReady kid takes it um reports generate generated right away teacher can see it
Right.
um on top of that the the teacher will see okay the student's not doing so well here here's a few strategies that you can use to make sure that this kid is um on par
Mm-hmm.
um and that's like like I said immediate feedback and and teachers can take that now and use it during their intervention block so yeah and that and hopefully we're looking at like kind of what the the parent reports look like so it'll give more information to parents too.
Mm-hmm.
So well I think yeah from a parent's side obviously you can see homework grades and test grades and kind of have an understanding of where your child is but certainly have the assessment
Right. Right.
as a little bit more pressure driven type of test.
Yeah right you know or or you know you look at this report and if you just look at it and you we don't talk about it it's very I don't know how anybody can kind of figure it out unless you just you you gotta really talk it through so I can see how parents when they get an an MCAS score okay this is the score they got and here's what it be all right.
One more question Craig?
Sure.
When you were talking to from you know maybe two different teachers have two different styles one style may work better
Mm-hmm.
so therefore potentially th- those students in that in any particular class may do better how do we go about making it so we can kind of change the ways of a of teachers to continue on the learning process and maybe help students and certainly it's a
Um, it's a slippery slope right?
Right exactly yeah.
Um, and I I think it's it's a it's it's a learning process and I think if if leaders or or teacher leaders approach it as you know this is a learning process let's take a look at one thing and start with one thing at a time um I think that's the best way to approach it and I think in a few weeks we're gonna have our coaches here uh I think our coaches are finding that that teachers are coming to them with that one thing you know like hey I'm I saw this this piece on my data can you help me figure out how I can help kids in this area because it shows that I wasn't doing so well um there certainly are teachers who are reluctant because of what Dr. McIntyre said is you know there's a vulnerability piece to that you you all teachers take this data really personally and and believe me when I tell you if if their particular class scored lower than the class next to them they're not really excited to share that information um and they're not really proud of it um and I think at the end of the day all teachers want to improve um so it's just putting them in a position to to be able to do that. I don't know if I can hopefully that answered your question.
No it does thank you I appreciate it.
It's a tough one.
Yeah.
It's a it's
I just got one quick question thank you for this with with these numbers and everything and and I know this is only two years worth of data are we gonna use this somewhat as a tool to plan our long range educational plan like look at these numbers and focus on some of the things that we didn't score well on in here? Can incorporate that into our plan?
So I think we we look at trends and patterns over time so I think I think Craig was talking about this a little bit that you know across the district math is trailing ELA performance both in growth and achievement
Mm-hmm.
and so we're really trying to not that we're we're putting ELA to the side but I think you know one of one of the reasons why it's it's highlighted in the uh str- strategic focus areas is because we're seeing it as something where we're not performing in a way that we would like to see um I I think you don't wanna necessarily like put like I think Craig was alluding to this too is put all your eggs in the MCAS basket
Mm-hmm.
because um I you know I and I think it's 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 starting to shift nationally but I think at the local level we really have to be focused on you know you know and I think Tim's approach was a great one let's get kids into school let's get them excited about being in school
Right.
let's present them with engaging curriculum that's relevant to their lives so they can kind of really be you know really be thrilled to be part of the part of the school so you know I think it I think you can do things like you know a lot of schools have gone in the direction where half the day is English half the day is math it's and kids hate it
Mm-hmm.
because there you know there's no music there's no art there's no P E there's you know science and social studies are very limited I think we wanna provide still a broad academic experience for our kids because I think that's gonna really benefit in the long run and you know I think we're doing a lot of things to kind of try to shore up like math performance because it is a concern but we don't wanna chase like a couple points on the MCAS at the expense of killing like the joy of learning creativity and a lot of the things you don't measure in a test like the MCAS but become critically important when you get out into like the world of work or college you've gotta be able to communicate you've gotta be able to collaborate there's a lot of these skills that aren't measured on a standardized test that we wanna make sure that we're giving students those experiences 'cause they're gonna serve them more in life do they absolutely have to have you know a level of literacy and mathematics skills to be successful to get entry into college you know because of SATs and other things absolutely but I don't think we want the MCAS to be like the beacon that's driving everything we wanna we wanna it's an important data piece and data point and it's a public data point that's why everybody talks about it but it's it's one of many things we're looking at and that's why like um you know we talk about high school program and we're really trying to build a lot of those soft skills through like the business and banking program which you saw um Jim Sun talk about and some of the experiences he's had there you know hotel and hospitality the construction trades but also getting like early college classes because it's a different like it's a wake-up call for a lot of kids when they are in the freshman year of you know college compared to what you know in high school because when I said independence well high school independence is nothing like college independence so you know we're there so we've got all these things we're trying to do and and also build good human beings on top of it so MCAS is something we're definitely like we take it seriously we look at it we evaluate it we drill down into the data but there's other things we also have to kind of consider
Right.
and there's other factors that really you know are are indicators of success MCAS is just one of those.
And you know
That was a long answer to a very true question.
No that's that's fine that's what I was looking for.
But the other thing is and and I've learned this over the years is um you don't wanna take away the professionalism of the teacher either the art of teaching that each teacher brings to the table right that that what makes them unique about as a teacher when you try to standardize teaching um I think although you're you're thinking in the right direction that all all kids need to meet the same standard but the way that the teacher presents the material and the lessons that they deliver does certainly doesn't have to be the same um and I think when you do that I think teachers resent it and it's then they're not their best for the classroom and that's that's an I think we end up with full results yeah so
It's a tough balancing act.
Craig can I ask a question are we using the coaches at all to sort of grab those best practices right so to go to the room where this one area is like everyone did stellar as an example?
Um, we're we're I'm being careful with coaches and 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 why I say that is I don't want there's a couple things with coaches
Okay.
I don't want them to be looked at as the expert right the the job of the coach is to work as a partner with the teacher
Mm-hmm.
listen to what the teacher's saying and um understand what it is that the teacher's trying to improve upon I don't want coaches to go in and say all right you didn't do so well in this area so I'm gonna I'm here to work with you on this
Oh abso- absolutely absolutely.
um but where we are doing some of that is like with our mentoring program
Okay.
so with like our second and third year teachers we're sending them into to classrooms that the principals say you know I I give them a topic and say all right I'm looking for engaging lessons can you
Mm.
can you build me a a schedule where I'm gonna send some teachers in so that they can see engaging student-centered lessons the principals will build the schedule and I'll send all my second year teachers out to those classes
Huh.
we'll talk about the practices that they saw and and uh work together and figure out how we can integrate whatever it is that they saw into the things that they're doing every day so
Great just let everyone has strengths of finding a way to leverage those okay thanks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any else have any questions?
Alright thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright Kathy you're up.
I have for the committee's uh approval this evening the first is three warrants in the amount of thirty four thousand three hundred sixty two dollars and seventy five cents.
I get a motion all just all three of them at once?
Well s- first one I
Oh I'm sorry I jumped again I know you have a a date tonight so
I'm sorry.
Tom's waiting.
Tom Brady yes.
Can you just give the can you start again and then sorry?
The first warrant is in the amount of thirty four thousand three hundred sixty two dollars and seventy five cents.
I get a motion to approve the war motion by Jim second by Megan all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of one thousand three hundred ninety eight dollars and fifty cents.
A motion by Chris second by Laura all in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of two hundred twenty six thousand forty three dollars and eighty five cents.
A motion by Jim second by Megan all in favor?
The next item on the agenda is the twenty nineteen budget update and we do have two um updates regarding our budget uh one being that there's a new mandate that um was an unfunded mandate which requires that all foster children very similar to McKenney Bento be transported um back to Milford from wherever they're placed so that is new whereas in the past it was a fifty fifty split with the district of sending and receiving so as of right now we have a def- deficit in transportation due to that unfunded mandate of thirty thousand dollars and that's you know projected for the school year just not current so thirty thousand dollars right now um that we're gonna have to manage in our budget for the um school year the next update is that the circuit breaker revenue was released two weeks ago uh for the twenty nineteen school year and that funding came in at um just over one point one million um our anticipated circuit breaker budget was built um within fifty thousand dollars of that number so it is a volatile area so we'll watch that but as of right now we're within budget between our local and our circuit breaker revenue that's today. Uh, I have for the committee this evening a um professional development request in the amount of twenty eight thousand forty nine dollars and forty cents and that is for course reimbursement for the contractual obligation which does require a vote.
I get a motion by Jim second by Megan all in favor?
The committee also has a list of the latest appointments and hires from our previous um reporting of that information and there also was a release last week uh we have two um hurricane uh federal impact aid for displaced students one being a federal grant and one being a state grant the federal grant has a requirement that all of the expenses needed to be recorded as of June thirtieth twenty eighteen so that came with a little bit of uh creative accounting in order for us to be able to have access to that funding in twenty nineteen and how I would request the school committee to do that would be to approve a expense transfer in the amount of the fifty seven thousand six sixty eight from expenses from circuit breaker which would require a journal entry um over to uh the grant which will allow us to um build our circuit breaker revenue in FY nineteen by that fifty seven thousand six sixty eight it does require a vote because it is re- um it is transferring the expenses.
Kathy I'm sorry can you just explain what that federal
That is the um hurricane in Puerto Rico that's a federal grant for every district received a different amount of allocation
Okay.
um it's to offset the expenses for the students that we did not plan on last year
That came in.
that just came in for June thirtieth.
And did you have to show that you had students that were impacted?
No well they they know that through our SIMS data I believe we had nine students
Okay. Oh okay.
We did they asked for supplemental information throughout the year both uh we reported to the state the state reported to the federal government.
Mm-hmm.
Great thanks.
Now the state grant will be available to us for this current fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Alright can I get a motion to approve this transfer request motion by Lauren second by Chris all in favor?
And there are gifts Mister Chair.
Yes. Alright I've got three here I'll um write them off and we can vote on them afterwards I got one here from the team Mickey Ward charities um for the Special Olympics in the amount of five thousand dollars they I've seen the Mickey Ward charity bike run that they have down the best it's it's amazing what they do down there
Mm-hmm.
Um, the next one we have is Friends of Milford Area Special Olympics um for the Special Olympics in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Excuse me and we also have an uh a gift here from Harold and Marshall Rhodes uh for the food service program for unpaid school lunch balances in the amount of one thousand dollars. I get a motion to accept these three gifts motion by Megan seconded by Jim all in favor? Very generous donations thank you. Next on the agenda is future agenda items anybody have any future agenda items?
No.
Next old business. No one?
No.
Alright. And with that uh that's the end of it I can get a motion for adjournment motion by Megan seconded by Jim all in favor? Thank you have a good night.